Okay, we were waiting for you. All right, we'll reconvene in an open meeting. We have to...
Yeah, if it pleases the Board, I'd be happy to read the certificate for the closed meeting.
Yes, please.
Do each of you certify that, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in closed meeting?
Roll call.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. All right. Now, we're on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. I will open the public hearing the same way I did public comments. If you'll...
I should probably give introduction first.
You should leave context for the...
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Actually, your Chapter 30 requires that...
That's correct.
Sorry. So, the public hearing is to consider a modification to the Rappahannock County Code, Chapter 1. And it is to add Section 9, and being a new section added to the end, that section reads as, I'm going to display, and states that title name references to state law, amendments to state law incorporated. Whenever this code makes reference to any provision of state law or to a section or part of the state code, such reference shall be deemed to include all amendments and successor sections and parts of the state code so referenced unless the contrary intention is clear. Whenever a state code section or part of reference in this code is amended or reenacted and such section or part is given a new number or name by the state, the reference in this code shall be deemed to be to the new state number or name unless a contrary intent is clear. This matter was considered by the Rules Committee and recommended to go forward to the Board. The Board authorized the public hearing. This public hearing was advertised in the newspaper for two weeks in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15, 2, 14, 27. And with all that having happened, it would be appropriate to hear from the public what they think about this code amendment, after which you could consider it and potentially choose to adopt this amendment.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing, Chapter 1 ordinance amendment, please raise your hand and be recognized and come to the mic and give us your name and the district that you live in. Yes, sir.
District, Department of Defense, District. I'm Ford.
He's Ford.
He's Ford.
He's a quick one. All right. If nobody else in the audience, do we have anyone on Zoom that would be interested in speaking to this public hearing?
The people on Zoom line can raise their hand if they're interested. Seeing none.
Seeing none. I can close this public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the ordinance amendment as presented. Thank you to the Rules Committee.
Well, secondly, because I think we can get this done in under two minutes total.
I'm trying.
I know.
I'm trying.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call. Sorry. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Got it?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving into the public comment period of the evening. Do we have an echo?
Yes.
Okay. If you want a public comment this evening, please raise your hand. Keep the conversation three minutes or less, and let us know your name and the district that you're in, please.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you very much. That's wonderful. Thank you.
She's here. I'm with the...
You want this call?
I'm with the...
Oh, thank you very much.
Before my speech, I wanted to explain, you know, the lotus flower stands for people keep his or her high moral value even in the bad environment. That's a, yeah, that's a Chinese traditional philosophy.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Oh, yeah, I will see here.
Okay. Here, let me put the microphone down for you. He gets paid extra today.
Good evening. My name is Tiny Tam, and I'm originally from China and now a U.S. citizen living in Fairfax County. I'm very excited to address you today because I could never do this in China. This is especially true because I'm a Falun Gong practitioner. Falun Gong teaches gentle exercises, meditation, and the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It has benefited the holistic health of more than 100 million people around the world. Because of Falun Gong's roots in ancient Chinese spirituality and its unprecedented popularity, the Chinese Communist Party outlawed the practice in 1999. It has also begun a brutal persecution of Falun Gong practitioners, which continues to this day. Millions of innocent Chinese were arrested and tortured just for telling people about Falun Gong, including my mom. She was arrested six times. The U.S. State Department has cited credible records that the CCP has gone so far as executed and sealed the organs of Falun Gong practitioners. China has become a major international center for organ transplant, and many American patients travel there for this purpose. In fact, a Northern Virginia resident recently received an offer from China of a kidney transplant for $50,000. The issue of forced organ harvesting in China has been underreported in the U.S. media. In response, Fairfax County, Channadel, Frederick, and Prince William Counties recently passed resolutions to educate their citizens about the practice. And today, I ask you to do the same. Please introduce and pass a resolution to raise awareness of this issue. We have submitted petitions from several dozens of local residents in support of this request. Currently, we cannot stop the CCP from committing this crime, but your action will prevent the citizens of Rappahannock County from becoming the unwitting accomplices to murder of innocent people, and also help to educate our citizens about the evil nature of the Chinese Communist Party. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a facility in Otisville, New York, in there Falun Gong compound in Otisville, New York? No?
Well, people's nature is being conditioned for...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's why I use the people... I didn't say any of my Falun Gong practitioners are going to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, supervisors and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wei Shi. I am from China. I came to the U.S. 35 years ago to escape socialism. And then I stayed because I like the freedom people enjoyed in this country. And today, I come here to, just to do the same that Tiny does, to raise awareness. Hopefully, the supervisors will pass a resolution to raise the awareness of forced organ harvesting to the local residents in this county. I am a resident of Fairfax County as well, and I would like to make additional comments on the issue of forced organ harvesting. Here in the U.S., we would consider it shocking to think that a government would deprive someone of his livelihood, his freedom, and even his life because of his beliefs or religious affiliation. But this occurs in China on a regular basis. As if this were not horrific enough, officials of the Chinese Communist Party have turned these mass incarcerations of people of faith into a profit-generating enterprise. A group of distinguished international experts recently concluded forced organ harvesting has been committed for years throughout China on a significant scale, as Falun Gong practitioners have been one and probably the main source of organ supply. The CCP's atrocious crimes have taken the innocent lives of Falun Gong practitioners and probably regular Muslims and Chinese Christians as well, or anybody else who can, you know, take advantage of. You may find additional documentation in the handouts that we provided. This issue should concern us here in Rappahannock County because members of our community who need an organ might consider traveling to China for transplant without the awareness of the organ harvesting practice. Here in the U.S., the wait time for matching kidney or liver can take several years, but in China, they can supply a match in a matter of weeks. Can you imagine finding out after the fact that your new organ was taken from a person who had been imprisoned for his religious belief and then executed so the CCP could sell you his organ? Imagine the effect on your recovery and future health to have to live with this knowledge for the rest of your life. I hope the Board will consider passing a resolution alerting our residents and our medical professionals about this issue so that they may make an informed decision before traveling to China for organ transplant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's here.
Anyone else for a public comment? Yes, ma'am, Sheila.
Hi, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I wanted to tell you I am against the name change for the Lord Fairfax Community College. I want to tell you a little story. First of all, I want to commend the young man who talked about reenactment and about reminding us about what happened in Russia, and I'll share a little story. My late husband, Jack Dwyer, was a huge student of war and history. And at Christmas time, for several years, he went with a group of attorneys and judges around the world, different places. Cambodia was one that was amazing. I'll tell you that one later. But anyway, he went to Russia, and at this one spot, the young guy was telling everybody in the group about what had transpired as part of the history. And after she was through, Jack took her aside and said, "Let me tell you what really happened," because she had been taught a totally different history as to what had really gone on, and that's the thing that we need to be aware of. I was, I shouldn't have been astounded by Ron Maxwell's presentation, which was absolutely excellent, but the beautiful thing that he did, he gave us a perfect reason why to keep Lord Fairfax Community College as a name, because he brought up the libraries, the private libraries, and the importance of education. So, here we are. We have a community college who's named after a person who, in his lifetime here in this country, had a library, and education was very important as well as his participation in a country that was, I guess, not his, but to whom he appreciated the people, including young George Washington. So, that might be something that you could include in your letter that you're going to send to the chancellor, is that, because I used to be in advertising, and branding is very important, but here's the plus of branding. People who went to Notre Dame 50 years ago, when they meet somebody all over the world, it's, "I went to Notre Dame," and so there's an instant friendship and an instant connection. You have that with Lord Fairfax Community College. It's been now in existence for 50 years, so it's established a reputation for education and for excellence, and so that's something that we want to keep and be able to share wherever we go, and it's a point of pride, and so that should be included. The other thing about this whole interesting stuff that's going on, I take The Wall Street Journal, and last summer, there was a man who actually lives in England, Mr. Kalin, and he said, "No country or culture's historical record is spotless. The vital question is whether, at each stage of evolution, the balance of good over bad was sufficiently decisive to build a civilization that advances human generosity." And he said, "Where would you want to go to live? You want to go to Russia? You want to go to China? Where would you want to go?" That's why people come to this country, and that's the cohesiveness that we want to keep and build. And he talked about toppling this statue over in England of a man named Colston, and the reason for him is that he had participated in slavery, but more importantly, he did other things too. So, it was who was the man as a whole, and what was the good that he brought to his country that makes him want to be, you need to study about this thing so we can be educated properly and go forward. And the other thing, to add a little bit of lightness, last week, I wrote about "Help illuminates the big picture" in the newspaper, because I'd been thinking about it, and so I made a little, you know, a little leave behind for you guys. It's a map of Rappahannock County, and it's along with a piece of art that I found in The Wall Street Journal from last summer, and it's a puzzle, and it shows all the different people and their part of the puzzle, and it's how each of us in Rappahannock County is a part of that puzzle and how we need to work together to achieve all the things that we want to have. The comprehensive plan is a fabulous thing. There are various pages I reference in the thing I wrote last week, and so there's a way for us to go forward together.
So, this is the recording from the... Thank you, Sheila. I still love my taking nap pencil. I know.
Thank you. Make sure. Well, I didn't share it with you guys. Thank you.
Well, it's important it shows firemen, and it shows nurses and soldiers and all the people in Fort Worth County.
Cool. Thank you. I got two of them.
Oh, sorry. Trash it. Yeah. Anyone else? Public comment?
Thank you very much.
This is public comment. You can comment really on anything. We just can't speak to you.
No.
This is my job now.
I have a question on business. It says, "A resolution for reaffirming Rappahannock County's commitment to the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia." Has this body ever, as a group, has the county gone on record with an affirmation? I'm not aware of it if it is. So, I think reaffirming is not quite the right word. This is the first shot at it. The other thing that I'm wondering about is every one of you who sit there, who actually are the government, and all the people who work for state government here, and the police officers and whatnot, all taken oath to the Constitution already. So, I'm asking, why do we have this redundancy? Why does a somewhat, and now I'm going to get my, people with political motives push a resolution like this, which isn't even necessary? Every person who represents this government and who works for this government has already taken that oath. Some of you as little as last November. So, I wish you would not go on record as saying the entire county is in favor of this, because it depends on who's interpreting the Constitution, and that's where we have courts and whatnot. It's not a document that is, you know, is not suspect at times to other interpretations. So, I wish, I ask, that you not pass this, because I think it is redundant. I think it is not necessary, and I do not think it is reflecting everyone who lives in the county's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hank. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Rabial, Piedmont District. I hope you remember what I said earlier this afternoon, so there might be a tie-in here. I'm speaking because I think we need to pass this resolution. You can ask, well, you know, you took oath of office. You're supposed to abide by the Virginia and U.S. constitutions, and within reason, I'm willing to trust that you are. But here's the deal. I don't think, both on a state level and a federal level, we have people that I trust that are going to follow that oath of office. We have, what we have is a regime here in this country now that has been on undoing the changes of his previous administration, and I'm not for any of his changes. He's, I read a headline this evening that he's thinking about extreme gun control measures. That's against the Constitution. It's against the basics. The fact is this, and I'm going to be realistic here. We don't live in the federal republic that George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, Patrick Henry, and so many others established. We don't. That union really died in 1865 with a transition to what was a national government. That National Republic said, "Okay, you individual states can no longer secede." That's the gist of it. You submit to our will. I spoke earlier today and mentioned that I believe the history repeats itself, mainly because humans fail to learn from it. Over the past couple of years, I've become more interested in researching about the history of Poland. It's fascinating to me because they've endured an interesting history, and I could go on and on and on and talk about it, but at one point, in the 1600s, they had one of the largest kingdoms in Eastern Europe. Then they did something. What did they do? They created, they changed their system of government to allow representation from their own people, so that the poorer classes had more of a representation. It wasn't perfect. It wasn't what was created by George Washington and Thomas Jefferson, but it was something for them. And look around what happened afterwards. By the 1800s, Poland didn't exist anymore. There were three powers around it, which were absolute monarchies: Prussia, Austria, Russia. They took a look, and they said, "You Polish people, you're inferior because you think differently than us. You think differently than us, so we are going to exert our will." And time and time again, during the 1700s, Poland was conquered, and each time, a part of it was taken away, and it was subdivided between the three powers. And eventually, again, it was completely taken over. Its people were subject to serfdom, which in reality was slavery. Two of the many people that fought in this, Casimir Pulaski and Tadeusz Kosciusko, they came from over there fighting rebellions and fighting against these powers, came to the U.S., saw the American War of Independence, and they joined it, and they fought. Kosciusko, in case anybody didn't know, was a close mentor of Thomas Jefferson. They were close friends. Mentor is not quite the right word, but anyway. It's in my opinion that this, this Kosciusko and what Jefferson did in the Declaration of Independence was largely influenced by Kosciusko's beliefs. There was one big difference in it. Kosciusko saw the American system of slavery as the same thing as serfdom in Poland. The point is, and I'm trying to make, is these people, for generations, did not stop fighting. Generation after generation of Poland rose up against these powers to try and regain their independence, and it really wasn't until after World War I when they finally regained that. Two decades later, they got trampled by Hitler's Nazi Germany again. So, I think we're at a point in this country, unfortunately, where I'm really concerned about where we're going. And again, there's some parallels between what is happening, what happened in Russia, and what happened in Nazi Germany during the '30s and '40s. So, they identified one group of people and said, "We don't like you. We think you're inferior, and your education system, your statues is such that we're going to take them down." And that led, we all know what that eventually led to. So, in conclusion, I ask that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors unanimously pass this resolution. I think you also need to keep this resolution in mind. There may come a time where, more than just writing words on a piece of paper and sending it and sending a letter to our governor in Virginia, there may come a time where more needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? Not seeing any hands. Is there anyone on Zoom? Hopefully, you can hear us. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom world.
Seeing none.
Okay. Seeing none. We'll close the public comment period and move into, is it? I moved it. I don't know what letter we're on. Q, New Business. Resolution reaffirming Rappahannock County's commitment to the constitutions of the United States and Commonwealth of Virginia.
I believe it would be appropriate for the Rules Committee to introduce this, as is recommended by the Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Madam Chairman, last month, after the Board of Supervisors meeting or at the end of the regular seven o'clock session, there seemed to be a sentiment shared among the board members that it would be a worthwhile endeavor to take up resolution reaffirming Rappahannock County's commitment to the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia, based on my feedback from the other members of the Board. At that point, I'd seen several different samples that had been adopted by other counties at different times. I did stumble upon one. I know we wanted to be general in our approach and not overly emphasize one amendment over the others and just be factual. the others and just be factual and really cognizant of what we were doing when we, when we took this up. And so I did find a nice sample from James City County that I thought would work very nicely with very few changes. We worked through it in the Rules Committee, and that is what you will find attached to the agenda this evening. If you have any questions about it, I certainly am open to fielding them. And Mr. Frazier may have something to add as well.
I, thank you. I completely understand Mr. Gorfine's question about why we were reaffirming when we hadn't officially affirmed once before. But you're correct, sir, that the board does take an oath of office. So that's our affirmation. This is a reaffirmation. We had people, I guess, for the last two months, very few people in the community, that were asking this board to do something basically in violation of the Constitution. And this is just a, I guess, a statement that says, we're not going to, we're not going to violate our oath, we're not going to violate the Constitution. So hopefully, that'll put those types of requests to bed. We won't have to see any more of them.
If I may, I'm glad Mr. Gorfine's come out of public media and attendance retirement because he'll keep me on my toes. Actually, I have the, my only, my only comment on the draft, and I appreciate you reviewing so many of them, is I do think from, and maybe I can just give some context for those of you who weren't at our February meeting, but Mr. Frazier was on Capitol Hill on January 6th, and there are certain members of the public that made some issue of that and requested that we, as members of the board, take some action against our colleague. And as I said twice, both in the afternoon at our February meeting and in the evening, just so everyone knew, I picked up the phone and called Mr. Frazier. And I thought that was the way to handle it, to say, Mr. Frazier, I have no issue with what you did. I would never take any action against you for doing what you do in your free time. And I thought at that time that that was enough. But as the meeting went on in the evening, this came up in discussion. And what I recall Mr. Parrish suggesting was that we did not want to, again, invoke the idea of a sanctuary county, Second Amendment sanctuary, et cetera. And I think this draft largely does that. My only, my only suggestion is just the header or the title of the document might be amended to read, because I believe this is, this is about us. We're not, it's not about the county as a whole. It's about us as members of Board of Supervisors who are reaffirming, as Mr. Frazier just articulated, the oath we've already taken. So it should state, in my opinion, and for discussion, resolution reaffirming the commitment of the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I don't, I mean, that's, that's what I was thinking long before Mr. Gorfine made his comments. And I wanted to make sure that I offered that edit publicly and that I wasn't calling someone on the phone and suggesting it and being accused and doing something in the background. So I just put that out there. I'd be fine with it if we could just make it about the members of this body. Because if you read, if you read the phrases that follow, it says to me that's exactly what we are doing as individual members of the Board of Supervisors. We are reaffirming that we uphold our obligation to the constitutions of Virginia and the United States. So that's all I have to say.
So are you suggesting that we just, instead of saying Rappahannock County, say Rappahannock County's Board of Supervisors?
Resolution reaffirming the commitment of the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I thought we were going to do. Again, I felt like I had done enough. But, but just contacting Mr. Frazier and all of us said we had no interest in taking any action against him because it's his First Amendment right to do whatever he pleases. And if we need to, you know, go one step further, for whatever reason, symbolic or otherwise, I'm willing to do it. But I just prefer that we talk about us, because I don't think that what happened at our February meeting leads to us therefore making a declaration about the county and all of its citizens as a whole. I think we were talking about our body.
Right.
That's, that's all I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think that's what Mr. Parrish said in February.
So Christine, is that, does that suit you that we specify that it's us?
I think it's a lot of counting angels dancing on the head of a pin to rename this. I mean, it's very, I mean, I found the most general and agreeable resolution that I can in hopes that it would be adopted unanimously with very little tinkering.
It's, it's one.
So, I mean, if we are the elected officials of Rappahannock County, and so if we take this vote, we are reaffirming the county's commitment. So I really.
If you read the body of it, it suggests that, I mean, almost every phrase is talking about.
Board of Supervisors.
The board, the board, the board. So, I mean, I don't want to get stuck on this all night. We've been here since 2:00 P.M. I just think that that's, that's what I thought we were doing. I thought it was us reassuring one another and the citizens that we aren't going to do anything that's against our commitment to the constitutions of Virginia and the United States. And again, I think we demonstrated that. And if we need to now state it, so be it. But I think it's about us as five members of this local governing body. And we just make that change, I'm good with it.
Well, by all means, then go ahead and make the motion. I mean, we've been here with resolutions before. Just go ahead.
Let me just say.
Excuse me. Ms. Smith? Go ahead.
It said, when, I mean, you know, the whereas is just fluff. The meat is like, therefore be it resolved. Now, therefore be it resolved. And it says that the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia, respects the structures and limitations of governance, da-da-da. And then it keeps on going like that.
Right.
So that does clarify that it is indeed the Board of Supervisors that's doing this. So, so it would, in a way, almost be redundant to have, I mean, I don't, I get your point. But being as, as I say, where it comes down to, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, that pretty much spells it out and clarifies that it's the Board of Supervisors that are reaffirming.
My, my issue is that we had, we had one individual get up to the microphone and say to us, and it was stated again by speaker today, that he was watching us and we had better be careful. So I took that to mean that we, as individuals, were being questioned about our commitment to the constitutions of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States. And so I believe that the title of the document should focus on us as individual members of the local governing body. I'm not going to stand on that. And frankly, Ms. Smith, I'm not tinkering with it. I'm just trying to make the title reflect the content. Because there is a difference. And that's fine.
Are you here to make a motion or to direct the conversation?
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution with the changes to the title of it that I proposed.
Could you read that back, please?
Yes. Resolution reaffirming the commitment of the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Got it. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, record the roll call vote. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And aye also.
Madam Chairman, I know we've been here a long time. We did have Ms. Tang come, join us this evening and bring us this resolution. And I just wanted to note, I have been contacted by folks in my district, and that this is an important issue for us to take up. And I would move forward, suggest we move forward with a resolution based on the Shenandoah County resolution as soon as possible. And I just wanted to state that.
All right.
Is there, she mentioned a petition with 12 signatures.
That's, I have that here.
Could I see that?
This will be a subject at another board meeting, I assume, is what we're talking about.
Yes. But I just wanted to make it clear to Ms. Tang, since she came to visit us this evening, that we would, we would take that up. And I would be happy to continue to address that on her behalf.
Okay.
All right, we are at the moment, if I, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
For a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.